Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I have no kids that won state championships, no school that was recognized as the outstanding school, no popcorn or candy. But I did chauffeur Sally Cobble around today. So does that count? That's almost like staying at Holiday Inn Express. That's pretty close.
And he didn't lose them.
Yeah, yeah. We stayed with each other. So what a great honor it's been to be in the district today. Slipped out for just a little bit, went to Ulysses, but it's been most of the morning, early afternoon, and then back with you. And so I want to share with you what the state board is doing and kind of talk to you about continuing to think different. We really saw some outstanding programming at schools today and some really, people working really, really hard. So we're just really enthused about that as we go forward. So I got to meet with the administrative team a little bit today, too. We're going to kind of truncate this down and kind of hit the highlights of what the state board's been working on and talk to you about this thing called school. And I think the lead-in was really good, talking about assessments and the whole child, really what we're trying to get at over the next several years. So there's several things that are driving the state board's work. And one of that is that if you read Newsweek or you read Forbes, you may have read in the December issue of Forbes magazine that for the first time in recorded history, this is just around World War II, fewer Americans are living in the middle class than either in poverty or wealth. The middle class, which used to make up the majority of Americans, is no longer the majority of Americans. And this is happening also in Kansas. Now, I think everyone recognizes that, that I think the real issue across Kansas, the United States is, well, then what's the solution to that? And how do we approach that? But certainly in Kansas, when we look at, you think about the class of 2016, as they walk across the stage in just a week or so, that 71% of the job market they're going to enter into Kansas can require something beyond that high school level. And I would tell you that has changed dramatically in a generation. I'll give you an example of this. My grandparents, all four of my grandparents had a sixth-grade education. My mother and father went graduate high school, did not graduate college. My mother went back in her 60s because the job she held at a community college required her to hold a degree and she felt inadequate. But she did that very late in her life. But I'll give you an example of my grandmother. When she retired in 1985, she was the hospital dietitian at Coffeyville Memorial Hospital. All right, that was her job. So if we all jumped on the bus, took the short drive from here to Coffeyville, and we're going to apply for that job tonight, do you know what the entry-level requirement for that job is? It's actually a master's in either dietary management or nutrition. And my grandmother had a sixth-grade education. Now, I think you all probably know how she got that job. At a young age, she went to work at the hospital putting food on trays. They liked her work ethic and they moved her up to assistant baker, and then baker, and then maybe a shift manager. But today, that would be capped simply because of her level of education. And so I don't know if that's good or bad. Honestly, I don't know if that's, you know, if that is good or bad. But that's the reality of what our kids are going to walk into. And that 71% is about a 50-50 split. So, you know, if we have 450 graduates coming up in just a week or so, the question we have to ask is, are they prepared for their future, not for our past? And what we see in Kansas, across Kansas, is that in both of these areas, we're low in hitting that target. And we're woefully low in this area. Woefully low. In turning out physical therapy assistants and H-back people and plumbers and welders and electricians. And we could go on and on. Just not too far from here in Goodland, they graduated a year ago eight computer app development app. Those eight kids, that's an 18-month-after-high-school certificate program. They're all employed in Kansas, or at least they were last time I checked. Between $50,000 and $75,000. 18 months out of high school with no debt. Now, I think we have to think about that as we think about, you know, what, how do we help kids reach their passions? So this comes out of the Georgetown Policy Institute. It's a nonpartisan look at each state. And we have great jobs in Kansas that are going unfilled. In fact, in my hometown of Montgomery County, which has the highest unemployment rate in the state. If we were down in Independence or Coffeyville or Cherryville or anywhere, they would tell you they've got jobs going unfilled, even with the highest unemployment. They have people that are not skillable. They're not hireable, even in our highest unemployment area. So the state board charged me, when I took the job, said, "We want you to go out and we want you really to collect some data, bring it back and lead us through a process that would develop a vision." So when I took the job, I had some vacation days that I hadn't used. And Sally thought it'd be a good idea if I used all of them. So I did. And I went out to 27 different locations in Kansas. We came to Garden City. We were in Dodge City. We were out in western Kansas several times. We asked a simple question, though. We only asked three of those meetings. But the first one was very simple. If you could imagine and think about a successful 24-year-old candidate. And we picked 24 because we thought that's generally the age where you completed your formal education. So if you think of a successful 24-year-old in Kansas, how would you describe that person? What are the skills and the attributes and the characteristics? And we asked that to over 2,000 people, these focus groups, educators, higher ed, parents, business leaders. We simply asked that question. And here's what they told us. So when we walked through this a little bit later, this is what the state board's put together based upon what Kansas told us. 23% of the responses said you have to have some academic skill. You've got to know how to read and write and do some things academically. 70% of responses were not academic. Soft skills, employability skills, but not academic. 3% said they're healthy mentally and physically. Healthy. 2% said at 24, employed, not living in my basement. You know, as a father of a son that just graduated college, who is living in my basement, but employed. But employed on contract, that's a good thing. And 2% of the responses were credentials. This represented over 2,000 responses, the largest qualitative study. Kansas State University did the kind of combining of this for us. And then we went back out because we didn't have as much business participation as we liked in the first 20. So I called up the Kansas Chamber of Commerce and we worked closely with them. And then we worked closely with local chambers. And we said, "If we come back out, can you get the business leaders in the various communities?" And we went seven different locations. We asked the exact same question. This time it was all business leaders. From at the large of Spirit, Goodyear, Hallmark, to the mom-and-pop shops, all right, and everything in between. Asked the exact same question, and this is what they told us. Now, after that, we asked the question of, "What's K-12's role, if anything, in producing this person? And what's higher-ed's role, if anything, to produce this person? Or is it, they get it from their parents? Or what's the role?" And I'm going to talk a little bit about that with you this evening. But one of the things they said, this goes right to your comment about testing, said, "The last decade, you've put too much emphasis on standardized testing at the exclusion of some other skills that need to be topped." And so whether you look at the general population or the business population, these skill sets, Kansas said, "We don't see as much anymore as we used to." I had the great opportunity on Sunday, yesterday, to congratulate 542 of the top elite academic kids in Kansas, the governor's scholars, the top 1% of every Kansas high school here in the state. And so Dale and I asked him, Dale would ask him, "What high school are you from?" Because it was random order. And I generally would ask him, "What are you planning to do next year?" So we had a brief conversation. Then they met the governor with a photo op. And then they were off to meet their parents. And I will tell you that our general observation of, this is the top 1%, these aren't, you know, the scientists, the academic world, but many of them were lacking in these skills. I can tell that just by media. They were not as strong in these skills as they were in those skills, measure on some tests. Kansas said, "Don't throw out the academics. We still have to do those. And can you put things back in balance so we're just not teaching to a specific test on a specific day and cramming kids over and over and over for that at the exclusion of some other events?" Had the opportunity last week to be at May South Elementary. And May South Elementary is a pre-K-5 building. They have taken a program, there's nothing magical about this, but they've taken a program from Stephen Covey that's been adapted down to elementary kids. And here's what was cool about it. So they had a day where they were just going to show off their school. We parked in the parking lot. We were greeted by kids, kindergarten, the fifth grade. They walked us in the building. There was a registration table. They registered us. They had name tags, they had color-coded folders. They took us into the lunchroom. They fed us our breakfast. And then they toured the building. This is, this went on from 8:00 in the morning until 2:30 in the afternoon, all run by kids. There was never an adult that intervened in that process. As we walked the halls and up, we met other kids coming out of classrooms. The vast majority of kids would stop and say, "Hi, I'm Randy Watson. Welcome to our school. What do you do?" And what they had done is that they had completely inverted their school to these skills and then taught the academics through them. And it was remarkable to see a difference in where this was their total focus, what the academics then played into versus the other way around. And it was just remarkable to see the growth in these kids. I, you know, the fifth graders and fourth graders, the upper kids were remarkable. I hung around the kindergarten, first grader because they wanted to show me their notebooks and what they were learning and what they were writing about and all the things that they were doing. Just one example. So Sally and the state board took this information and the answers to question two and answers to question three and said, "All right, we're going to go for this thing. We're going to go big. We're going to really go big. We're going to lead the world. You know, it's Finland, Singapore. We're going to go lead the world. And we're going to do it by looking at every child and maximizing his or her success." And it sounds so simple. But for years, we've had this thing called school. And kids come in, and we all love kids and we all work hard. Kids come in and we try to make them fit this thing called school. And now we're trying to invert the system and say, "What if the kid came in and the system adapted to the kid and the families? Really important." And that little shift is what the state board would like for all communities to not just start, because you've already started really enhance, really go through and really work with the communities about leading the world and the success of each student, which by the way, will be different. Right? How many of you have more than one child yourself? Your family has more than one? Have you ever looked at your spouse and went, "How did this one come from us?" Did you ever do that, right? Like, you know within your own family how different your own kids are? Think about the elementary schools that we just saw, the middle school, how different every one of those kids is. And yet, we primarily try to put them into the same, the same course of study. So here's what the state board said we should focus on. Successful high school graduate has these five areas done well. Academic, sure. If you're going to go be a veterinarian, like, going to be a veterinarian, someone's going to want to look at your ACT score. Right, wrong, or indifferent. They're going to be scholarship-awarded in that. They're going to get admittance. It's very competitive to get into vet school. So academic preparation is measured on a test is important and it's perspective. Cognitive. So have you ever been around someone that was like a 36 ACT, you know, straight A, and you said, "Oh, by the way, which way's north?" "I don't know," right? If you're common sense, then just relax and common sense. You know, cognitive preparation. Thinking, problem-solving. Those sometimes are academic, but oftentimes they're the thought process that makes that up. Technical skills. Can they read a tape measure? Can they count back change? Can they have the technical skills to put things together? Employability, some of those soft skills we talked about. Show up to work on time. Be courteous. Have goals. And then civic engagement. Kansas were very clear in what they told us they wanted. They said, "We want kids that give back to their communities. We want kids that think broader than themselves." Now, what I think is really pretty interesting about this generation is that they do that very, very well. They really do take to that very well. And so guess which of these five are most important? They're all equally important. There's not one more important than the other. And yet, in the last decade, Kansas schools, under No Child Left Behind, have been asked to go do a reading and math assessment that then got published in the newspapers across the state, rank-ordering schools, based upon one assessment on one day. And that sole emphasis has taken away from some of the other emphasis that we even saw today. Kansas said, "Please put these in balance and perspective." Put those back into balance and perspective. And then, to be successful in doing something post-secondary, because most kids are going to need it. They're going to need something after high school, either workforce without the need for remediation. And so to measure that, how are we going to know then if we reach this? So we've been talking a lot at the state board level about John Kennedy's work in when he challenged the United States in 1960 to land a man on the moon and return him safely. Many of us weren't alive in 1960, or if we were, we were young. But if you go Google that, you'll find out that our spaceships, our rockets in 1960 had a habit of not going very far and crashing and burning. And yet, he challenged us to land someone on the moon. I will tell you this. Through all of our hard work and the people you just were acknowledging have never worked harder in their lives. They are dedicated to kids in this school district and they're working hard. But we've just about tweaked as much out of the system as we can. There are kids here in Garden City. There are kids in Coffeyville, my hometown. There are kids in Blue Valley. There are kids in Hugaton that despite our best efforts, are leaving school, not graduating. Despite our best efforts, we're not being successful with some kids. Many kids we are. And what matters generally is the level of poverty. The higher the poverty level, the more the unsuccessful rate tends to grow. So, you know, if you're in a low-poverty area, the school tends to work really well. I'm talking about, you know, an elementary school, which feeds a middle school, feeds a high school, seventh-period day or a block schedule. And you go from math class to choir to Spanish and, you know, a bell rang and you go somewhere. But for some kids, it just doesn't work. And so the question becomes, as we do this, how will we know that we're succeeding with every kid? State board said, "Here are the outcomes we're going to look at." But I want you to know this. The board is committed to this. Here's what the board's committed to. And so when I had the honor of being in your schools today, I'm just, I'm looking at every kid through that lens. From, you know, from the kids at Metta's that we got to see over at Garfield to the kids that, you know, were right there, Buffalo Jones greenas as we got out of the car, to the kids at the high school. I'm looking at every kid just wondering, "Are we maximizing what he or she wants to do in their success and working with their families?" You know, that's the way I look at it anymore. So here are the five outcomes. Will these lead to those? They will if you don't just think of these as a check mark so that someone says, "Oh, I checked that off." I mean, if you really work these and knowing that we're not here to say, "Hey, you're not doing as well as you should. We're here to help you achieve the goals that you want to achieve." So let's start with the first, kindergarten readiness. All the state board wants to know, we'll have a screener that we will give you this fall if you want to be a pilot, by the fall of '17 if you don't. Simply says this. When they walk in the kindergarten, how many kids are academically, emotionally, and behaviorally prepared to walk in? So I was before Senate and House Ed Committee earlier in the year. And a senator from the eastern part of the United States said, "Randy, whose job is it to get kids ready for kindergarten?" And I didn't quite, I just was silent. And he said, "I think it's the parents' job, don't you?" I said, "Yeah, I do. It is the parents' job." He said, "Well, thank you." I said, "Well, Senator, you didn't ask the second part of the question. So what happens when they don't do? What's your answer to that? Are you going to pass a law that sends them to jail? Or how do you, right? If parents don't do that work, that's the reality that I live in, is that sometimes they don't. We love for every kid to come ready. And a lot of parents and kids do. But what if they don't? So we'd like to know that. We'd like to know that here in Garden City. We'd like to know it up at Scott City. How many kids are coming, not just academically, emotionally, behaviorally, ready to learn? And if the answer is 85%, then the community of Garden City is doing its job, right? I mean, they're really doing it. If it's 30%, then it may be a conversation about, "What could we do at a state level to partner with you to enhance that likelihood of having that go up?" That's all we want to do. So it's not to criticize. It's not to do any, it's not to take anyone's money. You know, someone said, "Oh, so if we have 85, you're taking our money." No, we're going to scale up areas that are low with additional funds. We've got some ready to roll and we're looking. And by the way, this may not be something that we do at the school district level solely. So we were working with some communities and their faith-based communities handle much of their early childhood. Some heavy Lutheran communities and Catholic where most of the kids are in a Lutheran or Catholic pre-K. And all they're saying is, "Can we help train teachers?" Sure. See, or maybe, you know, most of them are in a state program or their parents are paying for it. How do we help every kid become ready for kindergarten? Because here's the reality. We have kids arrive here in Garden City that on day one can read at a second and third-grade level. They can attend a task. They can play nicely with others. And then we have some who have less than 100 word vocabulary. They may show up having no language secured at all. They come with some Spanish and some English, but they really don't have a foundation in either one. They cannot spell their name. They do not know where they live. And they do what I call the Randy Shuffle. They wander the classroom. They're not ready to attend a task. That's not their fault, but that's how they arrive. And so we have about 23, 24 kindergartners with that wide range. We never quite catch that up. Second, an individual plan of study focused on career interest. When does that have to start? State board said, "Start it in middle school. At least start it in middle school." You can start it earlier if you want, but at least somewhere in the middle grades. Four, five, six, seven, eight, something. Start it there. All right, now I want to caution you. This itself could change school entirely. And if done well, it will. And if done wrong, we're going to track kids into things they don't want to do. And it's a fine line. You're going to have to monitor this close. But let me give you an example. So if we were to poll some seventh graders, you'll find some seventh graders on the street. Just bring one in. And she says to you, "I know what I want to do. I want to be a veterinarian." You know, the only thing that you really know about that decision? She loves animals, right? She better love science. She better love a lot of science. Because to be a veterinarian successfully, she's going to have to take a lot of science. And if the answer is, "I don't like science," you're not going to be a veterinarian. But at seventh grade, all we really want to know is, and then middle level, "What are your interests? What do you like to do? Do you like to be outside? Do you like to read? Do you like to work with others?" Start listening to what, and then, "What courses do you like?" I was asking, you know, some kids today, fourth and fifth graders. So tell me, what do you like? And one kid was, "I love, I love science. I just love science." That's starting to give you clues, right? I never would have told you I love science. I love to read and I love to kind of think about those things. But science and math, I could do it, but it wasn't what I love. So this, we have to really be careful that we expose kids to as many activities as much as we can in elementary. We taught to them at middle school and high school and we slowly move them to finding their passion. And for some kids, that may happen. As early as late middle school, early high school. I knew I was going to teach in seventh grade. That's what I wanted to do. But for other kids, they're going to leave Garden City High School, still not quite known. But they will have shed some things and they will have closer ideas. So you get a high school kid says, "I want to be a nurse." All right, "I want to be a nurse." And then they go to college and they switch to be a teacher. And you go, "Jeez, missed that one." No. Because if someone says that, here's what you know. Here's how job shadowing can look in high schools. If I say I want to be a nurse, I need to go job shadow nursing, healthcare, teaching, clergy, social work, because all of those things have to do with helping people. That's what they're telling you. And then within that, you start to narrow down for them, "Okay, where is that going to be? Maybe you're going to go off and be in the Peace Corps." Right, at first, you'll hear them say, "Well, I want to be a teacher." Or if their parents are teachers, they never want people to say that. They just won't, all right? They, a lot of them come to that a little bit later. But what they want to do is help people. Now, that type of kid rarely flops over the next year and says, "I want to be an engineer." They're almost opposite sides of families. And that's, so when we work on this, we're not saying to a third grader, "What do you want to be? I want to be an astronaut." "That's good. We got a plan. Clear the roads, all right? You can't change your mind. Kid said he wanted to be an astronaut. We're bringing that, right?" That's not what we're talking about. So done well, this will really, really do well. If not, now let me, I'm going to, I want to talk about this a little bit more as it relates to this, high school graduation. 86% of Kansas kids graduate high school today. So this month, in May, if that statistic holds true for the class of 16, 14% of Kansas high school kids will not graduate. They dropped out somewhere in their ninth, 10th, 11th, or 12th grade year. That's the average across Kansas. Those 14% have slim odds of moving to the middle class. And soon, as you know, what happens soon after high school and college, life starts getting in the way of everything, right? You ever wonder, you know, as you raise your kids, you always think, "It's going to get easier. You know, we're going to have, just going to have to buy these stinking diapers. It would be a lot cheaper," you know? And then, "Oh, my gosh, you know, they're in all these activities and we're driving all over creation," right? And then they go to post-secondary school and it's like, "Didn't have enough to save for that." It's, it's, it's never a good time, it's always expensive." So if we think about this, and think about how we could do this best, let's say that two kids, let's say they're twins, and they know, they just have locked in. And, and the kid, these are sophomores, and they say, one twin says, "I want to be a diesel mechanic." "I love it." Parents say, "He's always taking apart stuff. I don't know if he'll be a diesel mechanic, but he's going to do something with cars. He's going to either build them or put them back." Says, "I want to be a diesel mechanic." And the other twin says, "I'd like to be in law." All right? Should they take the same English class? That's just a question for you. Should they take the same science? Should they take the same social studies? Or should they be different? That's just a question for all of our communities to wrestle with. How about this? How about the kid that's in church youth group and goes off and takes a mission trip this summer and spends two weeks in Honduras building shelters for people? Should they get any credit for that in high school? Do they learn anything? A boy scout that becomes an Eagle Scout, should they get any credit for that in high school? Sally and I aren't here to give you the answers, we're saying, "Start wrestling with those as a community." Kid that's in four H is the, and is the grand champion, showing sheep, does that, that kid have any skills? And how would we incorporate that? And thinking about again, how we try to enhance this. Fourth, we'd like to have every kid, if possible, complete something post-secondary. Not every kid needs to go to four years of college. So they are all going to four years of college, but here's the truth. Eighty percent of high school kids are going off to four years of college. And six years later, six years later, less than thirty-five percent of them have anything to show for them. And I don't know if you're following the legislature, the cost of college in Kansas is probably going up next year significantly to compensate for massive cuts going on to higher ed. So I went to school in the seventies to Kansas State, had a part-time job, a little scholarship, could work. I could work part-time, work the summers, didn't leave the school with any debt. My daughter graduated high school in oh-five, and my son graduated in two thousand and eleven. My daughter went to Kansas State, my son went to college outside of Kansas, but either one left with some debt. Even, you know, I mean, with scholarships and everything, they left with some. So how can we help kids go where they need to go and complete what they need to complete? So we're looking at, at every kid, trying to complete something related to, again, this individual plan. And finally, all of those skill sets that, that Kansans said were so important, social, emotional, and character growth, state board said, "Go do those things. Measure them, try to grow kids, we don't want to see the results. They're not for us to see, we don't need it, we don't need it. There's privacy within that. Just go do it and, and know that that's going to be a part of what we want to look at." Those five areas, hopefully leading to that. That's, that's the goal. And so they have a little slogan that we call "Kansans Can." We believe if we work together, we can get this done. And this is going to be really hard. It's going to be really hard. And this is, and what needs to be clear is that this is not saying that anyone's not doing a good job now. This is a different job. It's one that we've never asked people to do. And we're going to try to do it at times, and guess what? We're not going to give a lot more money. It doesn't look like to me that the legislature's allocating a lot more money right now. Maybe it will in the future. So how can we do this? So thank you for the opportunity, Steve, to be here with the board tonight. And more, thanks for having me, I really appreciate it. What questions can I answer for you as you continue Deep Popcorn Can?
Interesting on the statistics from the business community, eighty percent plus. It would be interesting to know, maybe specifically, but generally, what those skills were they were focusing on?
We grouped, Kansas State grouped, biggest group of ones called conscientiousness, and that was dependability and being positive to the company, showing up on time, attitude, yeah, customer service. So as an example, we were in Lawrence at one of, at one of those meetings, and a construction CEO said, "Look, I hired two people on Monday of the week that we were in." And he said, "We started at twenty bucks an hour." And I said, "Okay, we started eight o'clock on Monday, one showed up at eight fifteen, one showed up at eight thirty-four." We got them on, on, we had to get to the work site by nine, so we get loaded, we got there. He said, so I went up to him, we got on the work site and said, "Guys, we started at eight o'clock." And they said, one said, "Yeah, dude, we know, it was closed." And they said, "By nine-thirty, one was texting." And at the end of the day, so he's just telling the story. He said, "One came up and said, 'Now, how do we get promoted in the company?'" And he said, "They could, they had some academic skills. They didn't have anything that, what he was determining was, 'I don't know that you're employable by us. You're not giving, you're not giving this work ethic, I'm paying you pretty well to start this, but you're not giving that to..." And we had, we've had a long discussion about why that is, but we heard over and over from businesses telling the story about, "I can't pass the drug test, I can't, I can't, I don't show up on time. I want to leave early, I want to, I want to be all about my perks. When's my vacation? When's my raise coming?" And that, we, we, and of course, we heard over and over, "We'll give you all those if you show us that you're worth something." So, yeah, it was interesting, it just, it blew me away when I saw that. Because I really thought I would hear over and over, "They can't use a tape measure, they can't count back change, they don't have these basic skills." And we heard some of that, but we heard a lot more of the, about the employment of the staff.
But it kind of struck me because, like, for instance, in our high school, like, you know, there's a, a teacher or two that give extra credit if the kids go volunteer and have a tad for a few minutes and things like that. They've got to show up on time, they've got to work with a team, and they've got to accomplish something, and it's all in the day. And it seemed like that is really in the direction of what you're thinking.
Absolutely, absolutely. And think about this too. Where traditionally, we just think about high school in particular today, where are most of those skills learned? Extracurricular. So we, we saw this great, you know, theater, you know, and, and talked about that. So think about this. So if you're in a drama production, whether you're on the, the technical crew or you're actually an actor or actress in that, you've got to produce, right? Friday night, we're opening the curtains, and everyone's got to work together. Hey, we may have to be here till midnight, get this thing pulled off, because tomorrow night, we're opening the curtains. Or we're going to produce kids that do journalism, or run a radio, right? We're going to run a TV, and you've got some responsibility to work with each other. Those, that's been traditionally where we've learned that. And Kansans said, "Keep doing that," despite what was one of the school finance bills, to cut all that, because all this thing we call school, and, and outside of school is what enhances. And so, yes, academics are important, but maybe immersed in these other things that we think about. And again, we're not, we're here to just tell you what Kansans said and what, what the state board said we want to go after. Then we want to work with you, because every community's going to look differently in how they approach this, because of the culture of your community. And so that's why Sally and I and the rest of the state board just want to partner with you and say, "How can we help?"
Randy, tell them about the opportunity for kids working, or the lack of opportunities for kids working today. That also drove some of this.
I'm sorry, before you answer that, I want to go back to something he just said real quick. So if I remember your graph correctly, eighty-one percent of business leaders, or business owners who you met in the seven different focus groups,
Yes.
discussed skills that you could learn in extracurricular activities. And if I understood what you just said correctly, one of the proposals in Topeka is to eliminate the use of state general funds for extracurricular activities and placing that back on local property taxpayers. Is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
And that, that was, that was, that didn't go anywhere this session.
Right.
And you know what? What you need to ask seriously to your local representatives, what part of Kansas told you something different? These are Kansans telling us this. This is the largest qualitative study ever done in Kansas history. Tell, we're not making this up, we didn't go out and say, "This is what we want." They're saying, "These skill sets are important." And they're saying, "Right now, they're learning a lot through, through band and debate and journalism and choir and football. And we could learn, and we could do maybe more like with Habitat and Voluntarism, we could integrate even more, but you're right, that's exactly right."